Let me go to the questions, Q and A. And is somebody gonna help us with the mic? Who's helping us tonight? If we can get someone to help move the mic around so everybody doesn't necessarily have to come up and stand, I think that would be a better way to do it. Okay? Henry's gonna help us do that. And I'll point him out. You just hand him the mic, Henry. Watch me. And you're gonna get the first question. And then, we're gonna end at 8:30. Will you give me a five-minute warning signal? So I know where we are? Okay, yes ma'am.
I'm Helen Von Walner.
I don't think it's over.
No.
You do have to sort of hold it at the right angle.
I'm Helen Von Walner, and I live right here in Tucker. And I want to know, the East Plots, where is that money coming from? Is it already in the sales tax? We pay now? Or where is it coming from?
Thank you for that question. Mrs. Van Walner, is that right?
Von.
Von Walner. Thank you for your question. There is a penny that we're paying now. The East Plots is being voted on for DeKalb County, for the city of DeKalb, and for the city of Atlanta. And the East Plots is a penny sales, penny that we are currently paying. But it sunsets. It runs out. So this will be for the extension of that. Okay? Yes, sir?
Yeah. My name's Benny Matthews. We're already in a regional transportation, you know, Atlanta, DeKalb, Fulton, we're already in a regional transportation system. One way we wanna join another, that would make us the high tax member of this little Fulton also, make us a high tax.
Can everybody hear him? Is it on?
I mean, I think you should negotiate a better deal for us. And, you know, we've been paying this tax for 30 years. We need some sort of credit. You know? I mean, these guys are Johnny Kelly's. And, you know, we're gonna have to, you know, it's gonna increase the price of automobile, or washing machine, or whatever you buy.
And I thank you for that question. And I wanna make sure everybody heard. And tell me your name, please. I'm sorry.
Benny.
Benny?
Matthews.
Okay, Mr. Matthews is saying, you know, we, your point is about Marta. That Fulton and DeKalb Counties, along with the city of Atlanta, are already paying a penny sales tax for Marta. And your question is, why should we do this now? And I wanna get to the last part of your question. You said, "I should've negotiated a better deal." Okay, all right. Let me be clear, I didn't negotiate this deal. The General Assembly passed legislation that divided the state into 12 sections. They created 12 regions. And then they said to each region, "You have an opportunity." And they designated which elected officials would sit on the roundtable, a roundtable for each region, to come up with a list of transportation projects. And then give the citizens within that multi-county region an opportunity to decide whether they wanted to vote for those transportation projects in return for that penny sales tax over a 10-year period. Legislation was drawn that way. And I agree with you that we've been paying our share in DeKalb County. And I think there's some things we still need to fix about transit governance. And when I say "we," I don't mean me. I mean the General Assembly. But we, as a group of citizens, would still like to see fixed. And that is ongoing with members of the General Assembly right now. We'll see what they come out with. But here's what I can tell you about where we are. Because I am a realist. And this is where we are realistically. We have an opportunity now to add $1.3 billion, as I mentioned, to Marta Transit, right here in DeKalb County alone, with another, out of this 6.1 billion, another roughly $3.3, $3.4 billion going to transit region-wide. That's clearly more money than we've had to expand transit over the last 40 years. The same with other roadway projects. Because about 53% is going to transit, and about 47% region-wide is going to roadways. With no alternative on the table right now. And in DeKalb County, we're getting about 146%, if this project list is approved. I'm not making any predictions right now. But we would get about 146% return on investment. In other words, we'd be putting out, in DeKalb County, about over a 10-year period, $800 million of revenue from the penny sales tax, not just coming from residents of DeKalb, but coming from anybody who spends money in DeKalb. And in return, DeKalb County's getting about $1.3 billion worth of projects, including a portion of the $600 million for Marta to keep Marta upgraded, what we call "state of good repair," a system that we've been investing in for the last 40 years. So, I didn't draft the legislation. It's not exactly the way I would've drafted the legislation. But it's legislation that was presented to us because it required the CEO of DeKalb County to participate in the process. I participated in the process. And what I negotiated is, I think, the best possible list, the best possible list of projects for the DeKalb County citizens is we could get. And that's what will happen for us, a choice next July. I just wanna make sure, number one, that you're aware of what we're gonna be voting on. And that you're knowledgeable, you know, aware of the vote, and that you're knowledgeable about it. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question that's of a different focus. My name is Cynthia Lofton. And my question is that it appears that some of the other neighboring counties have become more progressive as ways of tracking other revenue to their counties, in terms of building concert arenas, or sporting parks, or, you know, or a hotel, you know, big fancy hotels. And it doesn't sound like DeKalb County has any plans to do any of that. And I was wondering if it would do have those plans?
Well, some of that groundwork for economic development and growth that you're talking about took place when there was a lot more construction. I mean, you know, there's a lot of dead cranes around the city right now, you know, and things aren't moving. I'm going in and out here. I'm not sure why, but, well, let, can you hear me? Is this better? All right. Now, we'll work this out. And we do have a directive of economic development. I'm not sure if Charles is here. Charles is here, and I'll, I'm not, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to talk if you feel like you need to. But let me say that we're doing a number of things to lay the groundwork so that when we get, you know, the county doesn't build most of these things.
May I have your attention, please? The library will be closing at 8 o'clock tonight. If you need to apply for a library card, please do so at this time. We can bring in all the materials from the front desk to check out.
Her microphone's working just fine.
This is the real mic. Sorry about that. So, what we're doing is, we're looking at a new model for economic development. We've been looking very closely, tracking Gwinnett County's model. There are not a whole lot of venues being constructed by counties right now. But what we're trying to do is to bring in private sector development. And our job is to incentivize that type of development, and then get the obstacles out of the way. County government, or any local government, really can't be responsible for creating jobs by hiring everybody. We're in a downsizing mode, quite frankly. There's a new article about DeKalb County that came out, a very good article today in Georgia Trent Magazine. And I hope all of you will get a chance to read it. But we've had to, as a result of this recession, right-size our government. When I became CEO, we were overspending. We were into a recession, but we weren't acting like it. And we were overspending. And so we had to cut back our spending. And that meant, to a large degree, doing what other local governments are doing, also downsizing. But we hadn't reacted as quickly as we should've. We now have reacted as quickly. So, it's not government that should go out and do the hiring. Otherwise, we'll be right back up to the size we were, and we'll be overspending, and for a lot of reasons, you won't like that. That's not prudent fiscal management. But what we also have to do is to make sure that we're building our tax base. And the way we build our tax base is to offer incentives to get private sector growth. Now, hadn't been a whole lot of private sector growth, hence, we're in a recession. But as many of you all know, because it was very public, I was very much in the forefront of offering incentives for the GM site. 9,000 jobs we stood to have created. It would've cost the county some stimulus money that was gonna be subsidized by the federal government, we would've had to repay. But when we did a cost-benefit analysis, what we saw is that somewhere around between year 13 and 14, we would see a clear return on our investments in the county. And immediately, we would see a return on investment to the school system because of the taxes that they would get out of it. That wasn't approved by the Board of Commissioners. So, we're working on a Plan B. And the Plan B is we're working with GM, and a number of private sector developers are at the table because there's a tremendous opportunity for economic growth in that site. It's inside 285. It's at the intersection of where I'm already stationed, 285 and 85 Cross. It's just a tremendous site in terms of location and infrastructure. The other thing is the water and sewer capital improvement plan that I talked about. And that fits right along with the lines of what President Obama has been talking about, rebuilding the nation's infrastructure and creating jobs as a result of that. So, hence that announcement. And let me say, Charles, Charles Watley came over here as our new Director of Economic Development. He's been also working with a group of private sector stakeholders, and coming up with a new model similar to Gwinnett's. And I think I got to take an important phone call from home. So, Charles, can you come up and talk right now? And let me deal with this.
Good evening. How are you all? I'm Charles Watley, and I'm the new Director of Economic Development. This is age 22. So, I'm absorbing quite a bit. Excited about the opportunity.
I kept hearing my phone buzz, so I finally decided to look at it. To make a long story short, it was home, so I stepped out. Kids are okay, but my son has just learned my cellphone number. So, he's home with a babysitter. I'm trying to get him off the phone, and finally I went to the babysitter area. So, I'm very sorry, I've never had to do that before. It's part of what they, I guess they learn in school, you know, mommy, watch your cellphone number, daddy, watch your cellphone number. And neither one of us are there now. Let me say though, to Charles's point, we're very excited to have Charles. He didn't come here to get a pat on the back, but he came as a result of a very broad search that we worked on with the private sector. And we talked about this new model for economic development. We always try to strike the right balance of offering incentives because, in order to compete for business, it really is about providing incentives, like I said, and removing the obstacles to get private enterprise to come in. Because they're the ones who are doing the hiring. And they're the ones that are gonna grow the economy. Government shouldn't be doing that. And so, here in Georgia, we've tried to strike the right balance. Charles is well-respected, not only by us here in DeKalb County, but by the folks at the state Capitol as well. And so, that's what we're working towards. And I gave him two or three big projects when he came in here. One was obviously the GM plant, which I've already talked about. And the other is to make this public private group, this new model of economic development, similar to, something akin to what they've done in DeKalb County, to help move that along. And so, excuse me, Gwinnett County. And so, I think I'm privately, I don't say I think, but I know I'm private sector partners because I felt it alike a lot, are very well pleased. I'm glad to have you on board. Next question, right here. Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name's Martin Posner. I also live here in Tucker. The first thing I wanna say is, I have a lot of sympathy for the position that you and the Commissioners are in. You have to cut, cut, cut because the property taxes, the values have gone down, the amount that comes in has gone down. You have a thankless job, and I appreciate that you're working to make do with less money. And I know it's very, very difficult. I would not want your job, believe me. And in that vein, I also wanna say, please, do not cut garbage pickup to once a week. They came and picked our trash up recently and said, "That's where we're going for next year." And I really hope that's not true. I do want you to comment on that. And I wanna make one more, last thing I wanna bring up. There was a very disturbing report on the news tonight that $40 million of green space bond referendum money was apparently used by DeKalb County incorrectly for other purposes. It's atrocious. And some county attorney said, "Well, they've corrected it, it won't happen again." But I didn't hear anybody say how it's gonna be refunded back to the green space bond.
I'll be glad to comment, I didn't see the story, but I'll comment. First of all, thank you for your acknowledgement that it is difficult to manage in this type of economy. But we haven't done it just by cutting. I believe that government should tighten its belt first. And so, we did, we've done some significant reining in of our spending. No question. To the tune, in excess really of 20%. $130 million out of a budget that at its height, I'm talking about the, what we call our tax funds, our operating budget. It was $636 million before I became CEO. And we've cut $130 million of that spending out. And so, that's significant, I think. And why? You know, I had an employee ask me, she said, "Mr. Ellis, you know, you gotta help us. We haven't got a raise in several years. And our costs keep going up." And that is the nature of what it means to be in a recession. I understand. Because I'm trying to incentivize performance. We're not gonna be able to get back to the days of when we did across-the-board performance. But I am trying to incentivize performance in the county. And in order to do that, you gotta have something on the table to incentivize with. Money helps, okay? But the value of real estate as it declines, that's our primary source. And so, we've had to both reduce our spending and raise revenue. And we created a Revenue Enhancement Commission that looked at non-tax sources of revenue. In our mid-year budget adjustments, we added another $6 million. Alto, we've added somewhere around $11 or $12 million in non-tax sources of revenue. But so much of our revenue comes from property taxes. So, we had to do what every other local government in metro area has done, and that's raising our military rate this year. It's sort of balanced by the fact that for many of our citizens, there's been a decline in the value of their property. So, it balanced out to, on average, to about $93 a year. So, those are the sort of, what I call, a multi-dimensional approach, not just a one, not just doing it in a one-dimensional way, but a multi-dimensional approach to really attack our problems. Now, and I'm gonna get together two questions. We cut, we raised revenue. I think the next frontier is to continue to be more and more innovative. And we brought forth some very good ideas of how we're doing things differently and better. I don't know, and I think it's premature, there's all kinds of rumors out here about what we do and how we're gonna do it. There's some discussion about whether we will change trash pickup. There hasn't been a decision made either by my administration or by the Board of Commissioners about what's gonna be done with trash pickup. One of the ideas on the table is, one of the ideas, is to reduce, I mean, is to cut. Right now, we do twice a week trash pickup for, I think, $265 a year. Ted, is that about right? Okay. And then, we have a volunteer recycling program, which about 20% of our residents participate in, for a one-time fee of $30. You get a blue bin, you get 100 bags. And the idea, one idea, an idea that has been proposed on the table would be to reduce the trash pickup to one day a week, but to put everything, I know you don't agree, I got it, Mr. Posner, I'm with you. I'm just saying it's an idea on the table. I'm not saying it's been proposed by my administration, it hasn't, and it hasn't been adopted by the Board of Commissioners. But there is an idea on the table right now that would reduce the trash pickup to one day a week. Now, understand, other counties and the city of Atlanta do them one day a week, and they're charging more than the DeKalb County's charging for its two-days-a-week pickup. But in exchange, everybody would be put on the recycling program, which would hopefully shift some of the trash that gets picked up on that second day to recyclables that would be picked up by everybody in the county. And so, and we're looking at the numbers right now, to see what the savings would be, and to see whether that would meet the needs of our constituents. I appreciate you sharing your thoughts on it, but I want you to know that while there's talk out there, there's no decision that's been made. And secondly, I wanted you to fully understand the program. The, one of the things that came, I wanna talk about the fiscal situation you talked about. I got wind of the news story that you were referring to yesterday, but I know about it because DeKalb County, when we didn't adopt a sustainable budget in February this year, when I say "we," I don't mean me. I had the difficult job of presenting a budget to the Board of Commissioners and making the call about whether we need to cut spending, raise taxes, or do, or cut programs, keep programs, expand programs, or do some combination of all of the above. And when I proposed a budget this year, I did it with the notion that we were gonna have to raise our military mid-year, which is when we typically raise. And I did that because we had already gotten the warnings from our bond rating agencies that we would be downgraded if we didn't have a sustainable budget. And I mentioned to you, when I became CEO, we were overspending. And we, and even though the recession had already begun, 2008, we were overspending. And that's when we should've taken the measures to cut back, and we failed to do so. In 2009, we were just sucking fumes. And we had to do something, we had to do it fast. And I think that first year, we cut about $58 million. The second year, we were up to $85. And I mentioned, we're up to $130 now. But the county was overspending what it was bringing in. And we got downgraded by the, one of the bond rating agencies. And we were put on watch by the second bond rating agency, which ultimately did not downgrade us. They waited. Booties waited. But once the budget did get adopted, as you called back in February, the Board of Commissioners said, "In addition to what this cuts the CEOs propose, we're gonna propose another 8.9% across the county." And that really put us in a bad situation. Because there's certain services that we just simply have to continue to carry out. Fixed costs. We gotta run a jail. We gotta run a criminal justice system, the courts. And added on top of that, that while those departments are part of the county budget, I don't get to tell the heads of those departments how to spend their money. Why? Because they're separately elected officials. They're called constitutional officers, the sheriff, judges, et cetera. And the signal that they got from some of the members on the commission was, "We're gonna fix the budgets mid-year, so continue to spend." All of our money goes, because this is the way state law allowed it at the time, into one pot, separate accounts, separate account numbers, but into one pot. And as a result of that, I'm gonna have my CFO, I saw him somewhere around here, so he can keep me honest, correct any misstatements I make. As a result of that, some of the bond money got spent in other areas. Now, all that money has been replaced. It was just money was being spent faster than revenue was coming in. Okay? And it was all in one pot, but with different designations. We put controls in place so that that problem can't happen again. And there's no deficit of money in any pot right now. And Joe, correct anything that I said that was wrong, because he's the technical guy.
Thank you. CEO is correct. Nothing, the bond fund monies were properly expended for park bond programs as intended and as voted on. This occurred in June and July of 2010, and as soon as we get, we received our account info. And so, not only have we put the controls in place, and this was one of the concerns too, that was raised when we went met with S and P. They wanted to make sure that the monies were in the appropriate accounts. And we had to be able to show them that in fact, they were placed in the accounting. And that was an eye-opening experience for me. Joes, I see a-
May I have your attention, please? The library will close in three minutes.
That's about three minutes. All right. I had to step out. And if anybody wants to go out and see the library, you're welcome to do it. But I'm gonna stay here and take questions because I had to step out. But the bottom line is that the controls are in place, that there is no money that was taken from the, I mean, the money is there. And the money is being spent on the parks upgrades. And I talked about the rec centers, but I didn't talk about some of the upgrades to the parks that are also taking place as well. We're not gonna let a dime go wasted, and we're not gonna let it just sit around. We're gonna make sure it gets spent, and it gets spent responsibly under our watch. So, thank you for that question. Yes?
Yeah, Weinberg from Tucker. Thank you very much for being here, and all your staff. I'm very impressed. Just a quick question. I was at a public meeting in August with the DeKalb Improves the Lives of Animals Task Force grassroots committee that's trying to get the animal shelter approved and volunteers going, et cetera. That committee or task force presented their results to the Board of Commissioners two weeks ago. And I would like to know how we can get involved with helping to make it happen.
Yeah, that group is, we put together the task force when I became CEO. And because I was tied up with some of the final decisions that had to be made with the transportation task force, I mean, roundtable, we wanted the Board of Commissioners to go ahead and get the presentation. I've not had the presentation yet, but I have read some of the outcome of the presentation I received this summer. Susan Nugent, I believe, well, we gotta continue to go. He's giving me one minute, so we're gonna go for maybe another 15 minutes. Susan Nugent, who is the Director of Fern Bank, is the chair of that group. And I promised Susan, Dr. Sumama, do you remember when I was gonna be getting that presentation?
It will be the week following the presentation.
All right. So, mid-November, I'll be getting the report. And we're looking at some options for some space. Okay?
I have a question. Is there a public committee?
The final report to the CEO and the Board of Commissioners is still in the making. And I'm not really sure what the exact date on that was. But I, what was the rest of your question?
It was a meeting.
Yeah. There, if you look for, I'm, sorry, online, Diala, DeKalb Improves the Lives of Animals.
In DeKalb?
If, the information you're looking for should be, my, I'll get it on camera.
Tucker, could you, could you, could you talk?
May I have your attention, please?
I don't remember the total, how many projects total Ted, you know?
The whole region?
Yeah.
Probably.
About 100 in the whole region? And how many in DeKalb County?
Uh, 41.
All right. Now, Ted Reinhardt is our WCO of our infrastructure group, and he can probably name more projects than I can. Let me, so, let me, is theatlaregionalroundtable.com, is that it?
Yeah, I always go to the ARC.
All right. Where should I, what's the easiest place I can tell her to go and look at the projects? And then I'll highlight a few big ones.
Go to the ARC, right on their website.
What is the website?
The pervig in the law that says that we have to pass this tax to eliminate two of the board members from nine to seven. And is it true that the school board trumps the county commissioners in the fact that they don't have to get zoning permits for alert citizens that live around the community that built cell towers at the elementary schools?
Yeah. I, here's what I know. I can tell you what I know. The legislation, and there may be somebody here from staff, let me know if you're here. Come on, walk up front if you can answer these questions, okay? But let me tell you what I know. The legislature acted to reduce the size of the school board from nine to seven. Now, I'm not aware that that is a part of the East Plots vote. But there will be maps drawn for both the county commission districts and the school board districts early in the year. And next year, when we go to the polls in November, in the case of the school board members, there'll be new districts drawn. It's redistricting is a neighborhood process. You go through it every 10 years after the census. And then, there'll be fewer school districts. So, instead of each member, each member, in other words, will represent more people. Because there'll only be seven instead of nine. So, the districts will be redrawn, Steve, oh yeah, of course, my chairman. He'll know.
Well, it is true that the bill that passed, the statewide bill, was pushed really just to affect DeKalb County. So, if they had a host and a sploß, not the transportation sploß, but the school sploß, if they had both those things, then you were covered and you couldn't have nine school board-
board members. So, it would make DeKalb County drop from nine to seven in the school board. If the sploß...
That's just the way it is.
That was legislation trying to tie the cap into it and keep other counties out. And so, but I think the legislator that had that goal, if the sploß failed, I think there would be new legislation to drop them to seven. So, I don't think defeating the sploß is a secret way to, you know, change that game plan. Like, if you could change the representative's mind and start a whole deal, you know, you could go back there. So, I think either way, we're going to be faced with doing away with that. Our school board districts, because that bill also said there would be no, they had to be equal sized, and dropping down from nine to seven. So, that's on that.
And I think the second part of your question has to do with jurisdiction, school board. The school board has certain jurisdiction with regard to school property, and when the cell phone towers exist on school property, then they get to make those decisions in that county Board of Commissioners.
But isn't that, isn't that commercial property, or commercial infrastructure going on, community property?
Is anybody from Plano?
I don't see one.
Yeah, I don't think it's Dean, but I don't see Andrew or anybody here from Plano. Is anybody here from Plano? Ted, where's Ted? Can you follow up?
Excuse me?
Yeah, can you follow up with him and get with him also? Did you get together with Ted Reinhardt and maybe...
Thank you.
...answer to that? Okay, yes, sir.
Thanks. Rick Lott, I came over from Brookhaven. Last year, there was a lot of controversy with every county municipal government, the pensions and the problem that's likely to take a time behind the future with the pensions, with employees, state employees, county employees, whatever. And there's been a big drive for a lot of outsourcing, so we can keep that handle on that. We've acknowledged that in the past. In fact, we had a conversation last time in Brookhaven. Is that on an ongoing basis? Have you let that die? Is that still being looked at, that we take more from the employee roles that can be converted to an outsourced role, so that we don't, as taxpayers, have to worry about the increasing pension problem in the future?
Well, the one thing that we've decided to do, and the recommendation that we've made to the Board of Commissioners, is to go to what we call a hybrid plan. Right now, we're on a defined benefit plan. That means if you, after you work for the county for a certain number of years, you have a defined benefit. And what that means, in essence, the pension fund owes you X number of dollars for the rest of your life. The problem with that, of course, is that the pension fund, like any other pension fund, invests in the market, and the market underperforms as it has lately and over the last several years, then that means more money than those who are contributing to the pension have to put in in order to keep the fund solvent. Many private sector companies, government has been, you know, we've not followed it quickly, but they have what's called a defined contribution plan. In other words, the amount you can put in is defined, no guaranteed benefit. Your benefit depends on the performance of the market, and, of course, a lot of us find ourselves having to work beyond the time when we thought we might otherwise retire, because the benefit is not what we had hoped it would be. The county for new employees is going to be moving, we have an obligation, let me say, to those who are currently under our, those employees who now work for county, run our current defined benefit plan. But for new counties coming in, and if the board acts this year, and Joe, I don't know what the indication is on what the board's going to do, but I'd like to see it implemented at the beginning of next year, when new county employees will come in under the defined contribution plan. And so, it will take some years for that to make a meaningful difference, but it does appear to be the wave of the future where we're moving towards. It's just hard to continue to have a defined benefit plan.
Okay, one more point.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Hello, CEO Ellis.
Hello.
It's the first time I've...
Plus divided either by race, or economically, or socially. There's been a lot of discussion lately about whether cities will be created, more cities in DeKalb County. Let me just say to that, it's okay to have an added layer of government, but the way the rules are drawn up in the state of Georgia right now, because when a city is created, it takes the revenue base away from the county, is that the creation of governments pits one form of government against the other, and that's not good for us. And so, I just want to mention that, since you raised that, because I'm hoping that the General Assembly will pause and take a look at the rules that they have in place before they continue to allow us to be fractured and vulcanized. And, thank you, thank you, guys. And let me say that we've worked so hard to build a sense, because there was a feeling or sense that DeKalb County was divided along racial and economic lines. And as your CEO, I've worked very hard to make sure I get all over this county, and I touch every part, and I don't make decisions based that way. I try to do every day what's in the best interest of the county. I believe the President tries to do the same thing. I've been to DC since I've been CEO at least a dozen times. I've had the honor of meeting with the President as, since he's been President, on, I believe, on two of those occasions, maybe three, but on two that I can recall right now. And on one of those occasions, to actually have an opportunity to have, get an opportunity to sit down and have a conversation with him, and to be recognized when he came and brought his general remarks on your behalf, because Washington realizes the importance of DeKalb County for so many what reasons? Because of our size, because of our demographics, and because in so many ways, we not only represent what the United States is demographically, but we can, in many ways, determine whether the President will win or lose the state of Georgia in the next election. And so, we've been having those conversations. We did extraordinarily well in getting federal stimulus money, somewhere around a hundred seventy-five million dollars, I think, was the number that we got in my first year in office, because of that strong relationship that we built in Washington, and because of the fine work of the men and women that we have on staff here. We really aggressively went after stimulus money when it was being made available. So, that's good news to DeKalb County citizens. And I've also had the opportunity to meet with the Vice President, Jill Biden, as well. He's a really neat guy to talk to. And in so many ways, I mean that. And so, we're working hard. We go up to Washington. Every time I travel, I get, you know, the papers ask me for an open records request, and we don't mind giving it in back, and usually, they don't even write a story about it, because we're very careful about how we spend money. But those trips are important, because they connect us and they help us bring resources back to DeKalb County. And one of the things we're working on, quite frankly, is to see if we can get the President, not only to Metro Atlanta, but to DeKalb County in the spring. So, we're working real hard on it. Keep your fingers crossed on that one. And you get the last question. Did I answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Well, I want to thank you. I want to thank you first, because you, without cross-sexing, it's very evident that you care about...
...to keep you informed. We're going to get to this in a minute.